All right, six o'clock we'll call the order of the workshop. Excuse me, workshop session for January ten at six P M. We'll start with the.
Images to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And so we in the hall we've got Chris Moreno. Todd Lee, Doug Lottie, Brandon Crone, Anderson Chris. Bob Gunther and Chuck Swanson, remember Chuck it's just short.
I was online.
Donnie on? Yeah, I'm here. Donnie.
Josh is on his way or will be joining at some point.
Yeah.
We'll start off with public comment, two minutes per person, fourteen minutes per topic. Do you have any comment on tonight's agenda items?
Brandon. Can you hear me now?
Go Brandon.
Hey, so this is Brandon Cozwell, I live at four oh eight Abbey Lane. I sent out an email, I think, last week about any consideration for either revamping the roundabout or finding some alternative method of traffic control. I was on the board when we approved that and I also have a front row seat to watch how it's not working straight out my back window. So I think whenever the email was sent last week or the week before, my wife and kids almost got T-boned for probably the fourth or fifth time at that intersection. I think there's just a general misunderstanding by just about anybody who uses a roundabout. Exactly how to use it. I don't think it's that complex, but I think there is far too many people that don't know how to use it appropriately for it to be a reliable means of traffic control. So just trying to voice my concern of. Kind of how it's working out. I did initially bring up. Maybe considering a stoplight when it was brought up on the on the village board meeting, however, many years years ago that was now. Sounded like at that point, there is pretty much all the engineering behind the scenes work had been done and it was more of just an approval at that point. I would like that to potentially be considered as an option again. So that's why I'm here tonight or not here, but that's why I'm on here tonight to. Answer any questions of the things I see on a daily basis. I mean, I watched today just because I knew this meeting was coming up and I watched almost four or four accidents almost happened today. So it's it's a daily occurrence. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Anybody else? See nothing, no close public comments.
Yeah, Brandon Crone, I'd like to make a motion to move the building inspector update to the next item on the agenda.
First and second. All right, first and second table any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed. Well, if there is, we'll move building inspector update next.
All right, so I put the agenda item up because. Um, there's a few reasons. So one was we have. The burnt out buildings, the old folks home. Up across from the Lutheran church, also across from there on Hud Street, we have a burnt out house that's been there since twenty twenty one. Those are the first two reasons why I kind of brought that up. And then the last one I I had was I had a comment from one of my neighbors that their grade is a little bit off on their. On their house, so it's kind of causing some drainage issues and some stuff like that. So um, the first thing I'd like, I would like to ask to go over is just if we've had, did we have a permit issued and has everything ready for the old folks home to either be start work on? And I have talked with Bob on some of this and Bob has answered some of my questions, but I thought it would just be good for for us to kind of meet each other. And I know we had kind of talked on the phone and he said it was good for you to have a present here. I just talked to us a little bit more, so.
Bob did email me on that too and. So we did issue a permit in two thousand one for the one leave on Hud Street.
Twenty one, two thousand twenty one.
Yes, it's actually sitting right up here in the file.
Okay, perfect.
And we let them know that it was ready to be picked up. So that one just hasn't been picked up.
Okay.
The one on Jermaine Street, I think that's apartments.
Yep, yep.
That one they are gonna do some changes on and we just received the state approval on that like probably two, three weeks ago.
Good.
So I'm guessing they're gonna proceed from there.
Okay, fantastic. That's kind of just like how some of that stuff works. It's kind of a slow moving machine, just because there's been some questions from constituents. I just want to make sure that they see we're getting the answers for them and then the last.
We we brought that house permit in twenty twenty one, so.
Right, so that that's actually, thank you for bringing that up. So when we spoke about this, we did say that there is, there is no specific ordinance and you had looked into that personally to see if there was an ordinance that required buildings to either be demolished or something of that nature of some sort of timeline. And I did look over the ordinance as well and I couldn't really find anything specific to say, you know, burnt out building needs to be. Or a condemned building needs to be taken down in a certain amount of time.
If it's if it's burned out. And it takes, it basically costs more than fifty percent of the assessed value to do the repairs, you can issue a raise order against it.
Okay.
And then. If they, if the owner doesn't raise it themselves, you can go to, you can either just raise the building or you can go to court to get a formal court order, which a lot of municipalities do just to. About the T is.
Okay, so it sounds like in this instance, the the old folks home is moving along and that their plans are coming along, but the other one, it sounds like the permit's been sitting for a little while. Would if that's been sitting since twenty twenty one, would that be a good instance for us to use that type of order?
The building permits probably expired. It's normally they last twelve months.
Well, technically they haven't paid for it yet.
Okay.
So. So what what would happen is when Flecia sends us or Andrea or whoever. Lets us know when it's paid, we go in and switch it on our end to the date that they paid it.
Okay, got it. Yeah, but a raise order generally tends to get folks moving along, getting their property taken care of.
Okay, fantastic. Um, so that's that was kind of one of the conversations I wanted to have because I really couldn't find a mechanism within the within the ordinances to. Do that.
Yeah, it's it's in state statutes and. If you end up having to raise the building, the costs get put back on the property as a tax.
Okay, so perfect. And then the last thing we had talked about was kind of the how you guys go about measuring and confirming grades and stuff like that. And you had said that you guys didn't have the equipment to measure the grades of.
Correct, correct. Our U D C just requires the smoke away from the building, a certain percentage.
Good.
And that's all we look at. So we we don't go out there and check elevation lines because we don't have the equipment to do that. I believe it be up to the developer, the contractor to to make sure that's done.
Okay, so the building inspector doesn't need to sign off on something that the they don't need to confirm something that the builders do we. With their own equipment independently? Not for the U D C code.
For the U D C code, no.
Okay, okay, so there's nothing in there even about having them come out there when you go to inspect it to verify and say, okay, here we can set it up and use verify that it's there.
No, because that's on your end. That's the village, the C S M.
Okay.
So that's all you guys.
Good.
That'd be up to the engineer.
Well, if I don't plan as a final grading. So when you have a foundation, if the foundation doesn't allow for that grading plan to be successful or, you know, to comply, that's when we have all these issues. So.
When you say all these issues, Bob, what are you speaking? Are you speaking of just issues in general or do you have specific?
We have, we have a lot of, well, not a lot, but we have a fair amount of elevation problems that cause hardships for people that are funding in their backyards.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I'm talking about in my vision.
Because they deviated from the graded plan. It's not to say that a homeowner hasn't changed some things and and created some problems, but a lot of times it's after construction work, we may even see that there's an issue and that's been kind of a point for.
So so what can we do collaborative, working collaboratively between the village inspectors and the contractors to make sure that they they are measuring these grades, ensuring they're correct? So we can prevent these kinds of issues from recurring. How can we work collaboratively or do we need to write some type of ordinance or some? Something specific.
Well, I think this was most recently addressed in the the development area of the school where there was the grading permit that was issued, the final grading permit and I must say it's on site.
Yes, yes, you know, sometime when they they'll tweak things during, you know, we're out there, they they've graded the lots and they're supposed to install it for grading plan. And, you know, that everything was. Properly designed and reviewed and approved. You'll be able to compare what they did out there to the to the approved grading plan to make sure they match up.
So how do you, how do you compare those two? What do you use to measure that, to quantify that?
Well, you know, either visually, usually usually if, you know, if the if the drainage is supposed to travel through the back of somebody's yard to the next yard, it gets filled in. You know, that's evidence there. Oh, yeah, otherwise it's survey equipment, you know, if you need to be a little bit more accurate, sometimes your eyeball, you can't tell if it's going up or down, you know, and so the grades are so flat and then you need to get a, you know, survey grade rod out there to kind of check, see if if you have positive drainage in the direction it should be going.
Should we be using a grading rod just every time instead of using our eye? Because so I work, I work here S and C, right town, and we measure stuff all the time. And if I told somebody that I measured something by looking at it, I don't think that would be an acceptable means of measurement.
No, and I I guess, you know, if an issue comes up, that certainly can happen, but.
It sounds like we have multiple issue, but what Bob just said.
What what's the remedy for a homeowner? They have an issue, right? So builder says unless they bought off on it, right? Then who do they call at that point? And then you get in touch with builder, you get in touch with inspector, you get in touch with engineer, all of it, some of it.
Yep.
And then it gets remedied.
Sometimes.
What happens when it doesn't?
Since. And that's where a lot of frustration comes in.
With the problem builder of builders had been in town recently.
Exclusively one, sure.
And that's been remedied, correct? They don't, they don't get building permits anymore.
Per that company name.
So, you know, when when you, when somebody.
Can we, can we, can we, you can't say it?
So that that builder that I think we're all aware of has pretty much just changed their names to disguised who they are.
So do we issue permits to the new disguised company?
Yes.
What what recourse does the village have if we see this time, time, time again, if the same behavior is going to continue, right? How do we, how do we curb that?
That's why I reached out to, you know, building inspector to see if we can put something on the builder to actually shoot an elevation from from the foundation to make sure that the grading plan can be achieved.
Yeah, and I can, so I can attest to the new addition that, you know, they are leaving, they'll put a bunch of dirt down there and they'll just leave it and it'll all wash out and they're not installing gutters on any of those houses and. Yeah, so the two houses that are across from you are for sale right now, their yards are going to be completely trashed in the in the spring.
I got a question. Sorry, I got a question for the the inspector. Is there a sign off for a certificate of occupancy on these houses? And if there is. Is all of that being done like what Brandon is saying that is not being done and they're up for sale? There are these houses have sign offs for certificate of occupancy without that, tho- those grades and stuff being in place? Is there a chance we could put that in place?
Well, that would be at the beginning of the project. We do give a CO. And. Like. Like today, we did a couple of finals. It's so we leave one open and that's control soil erosion and we don't sign off on that until we drive by and see that there's grass growing. But it's not a safety issue per U D C, so we can't hold back C O for that.
Yeah, a lot of times these certificate of occupancy happens in winter and you can't really finish up the final grading and the siding of your yard or whatever, you know, until you have weather conducive to do that. If if we have one. We have one builder, it's a problem, right? Anders. What kind of recourse the village have? Do we have anything that we can do?
Well, with the most recent large subdivision, there were protections put in the last agreement to. To limit. Some of the the action they can take in the village in terms of things that have been approved by by prior boards. You know, though, they, it's their property, they're allowed to build. There are some village ordinances that relate to stormwater or nuisances where if these things persist for a long time, they're not remedied. Maybe that's one avenue to go. Go at them with.
Well, if they don't end up right, another cost that we incur is dredging ponds. Right? So we've got, we've got a proposal on the thing tonight where we've got to dredge a bunch of ponds, we've got to dredge the River Hills pond now already, and I guarantee a lot of that's filled with. A lot of that's filled with.
One of those things would have been. You know, this, they're required, required to maintain the ponds for a certain period. I don't recall it, but some of the contracts require that, but it's it's a limited time.
Yeah, two year warranty period, some of those things. But, you know, we need to get that proper erosion control put up. During home construction to help ensure that that doesn't happen.
Who polices that?
We do.
You? How big of an area do you cover?
I think we're up to sixteen municipalities.
How many people do you have that look for you?
Ah, there's three of us.
Three people, sixteen municipalities patrolling every new house that's built.
Okay, so is there a solution? Can we get to the part where?
Yeah, I guess the, yeah, for the end, for the, I guess, because they get the erosion stuff, I guess that was.
I mean, that's, that's one issue.
I think the elevation issue, I think what we can start doing is talking to the excavator because he's the one doing the digging out there. And have him shoot it to make sure it's the right elevation.
Okay.
And we'll talk to the builder. I think that's where we start. Don't you, Bob?
Yeah, absolutely.
And we'll just start bringing the sheet out with us.
I like checklist, check sheet, those make me happy. Checklist.
Well, check. Accountable for this, right?
Yeah, I think this is, this is a good start.
There needs to be some some way, shape or form, there needs to be some kind of financial penalties for this builder, right, or any builder.
Before we get too far into looking at penalties and discussing a particular builder, I want. I think you should have as a separate agenda item, but. The building inspector has some potential. Uh avenues here, not sorry, cut you off, but. This one which you guys are following.
So Bob, Bob, you guys are gonna work together and you'll come up with a sheet as far as what's gonna check the grade off and excavator or is that kind of?
I think it's whatever he wants to use to ensure that that elevation is being.
What's the C S M, right?
That's the final grading plan, yeah, where the plaque comes at the very end of that. So a list, you know, a walkout lot at elevation, let's just say nine hundred. And then I'll tear it down to nine ninety eight or eight ninety eight.
So they turn in individuals for each lot.
Yeah.
And I see the elevation and they're on the C S M.
Yep.
So.
So we just go off at each individual one?
Is somebody checking that C S M to the great, to the? The. The grading plan?
Well, that's what I've asked Brian to do in the past and he's like, he said, we had a great plan, yeah, here it is, so. Soon that things will be corrected at that.
So.
Sorry, I'm just making.
So is that one thing they'll be doing to them, that is the communication, just for note purposes here, you're gonna be putting, just for note purposes, the solution was going to be communicating to the excavator. And have a checklist and then also checking the C S M against grading. When?
Yes.
So I just want to make sure I get it right here.
Tom, for something as we go forward through this, is there, I'm looking at ways that we can have, we obviously have a few different builders in in the area. Of having, I don't want to call it a grading plan, but something where we say, and not to mix elevation grading, but I was saying, okay, here's a number of houses that you guys have looked at or number of buildings and are we finding many issues, major issues and not necessarily itemized or we're saying this what it is, what we're seeing. Builder actually had, we did fifteen houses in the last quarter and we had no issues or we had two majors and six minor issues or whatever and trying to get some summaries of some of those things and then what sort of. Timeframes, I'm just looking at ways that we can kind of communicate, give feedback ourselves so that we understand what the builders are doing.
Yeah.
And then understand, understand what's going on.
And I, Brandon and I talked a little bit about it on the phone and and you guys are welcome to come out and do a walkthrough with us and see what we inspect. We have processes and if they fail one, they can't rewind to the next is how we do that and we make a list on what they failed. And I can't proceed till they get all done.
Okay. Right. Ah, so that was, that was all I had for that agenda.
One last question for, one last question for the building inspector. So you have, you've signed off, you've issued a C O, but you have the final grading waiting for seed and sod to come back on. Does that, does that? Stay open then until? Until you signed off on it or because if you have multiple permits that are open because they're not doing the final grade and getting sod and stuff down according to you to be signing off on, that would be a major thing for any builder or developer in the area trying to pull permits and having a bunch of them open because they're not doing the final sign offs.
Yeah, we we we've been holding permits off when they don't do the. The correct grading and erosion control plan and seeding and stuff like, stuff like that.
So in typical, and it typically with any kind of a developer, if they're asking for additional permits, do you let them out four or five permits and then if they they don't get those, you know, they come back and ask for four or five more permits? So they could potentially over six months' time probably have any worse from what, five, I'm asking you, I don't know, five to ten to twenty houses that are sitting out that are open permits on that haven't been signed off on yet.
But we also will not go out there and inspect. Two. If they don't have the, they're not doing what they're asked to do, I should say.
So basically, if they have something there, say they've got two or three, just pulling the number out that they haven't done the erosion control that they're supposed to have a fix that they want you to come out and look at two other houses, you're gonna say, we're not doing those, we're not signing, we're not looking at anything until you take care of this other stuff. So there's at least something there. Is there a time when you do a stop work or anything like that or is it or do you not do that?
Yeah, we did that this year or last year, I guess, no. We're trying to hold them more. What's that?
Where did the stop work occur at? What issue? Was it in the village?
Yes.
Oh, I think it was with the water going into, it was the water going into.
Water.
Going into, yeah, right.
Drainage.
So what's the fix their current problems they weren't allowed to move forward with any other?
Okay. I personally, we are trying to hold them more accountable. I I am, I guess, I should say. So I've been doing this for three and a half years now. So I I learn every day. So I hope you guys bear with me and but I am trying to do my best out there and hold people accountable because it's, to me, it's easier on everybody.
Couldn't agree more. Yeah, I'm, after I was, I really enjoyed our conversation the other day. I think this is a chance for us all to get up on a really good foot and, you know, just next year we'll get out there and hold everyone accountable together. Okay.
And just let you guys know, almost like you said, every meeting, he's been on, you're listening and if you have any questions, please.
Oh, we appreciate you.
Thanks for coming down.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
All right, moving on, committee reports, public works.
I'm gonna say update. We have quite a few items on the agenda this evening. So I'll skip over a few things and have like a couple others, but you know, the comprehensive plan, sounds like there's a meeting tomorrow night where the three subcommittees will be presenting some mockups. We will have a planner and attendance at that meeting. Yeah, and then, you know, we did meet with this. App in the school district about Church Road Utility Reconnection and, you know, some of the, some of the, the detouring that's gonna go along with that and we thought the. The next best time, we thought it was appropriate to wait till March second to meet again because by then we'll have bids and have, we'll know who the lowest responsible contractor is and and we can start talking, schedule and and we can start communicating when they anticipate. You know, starting at that intersection at Main and Church Road and looking away up and how they're gonna approach the project.
Just so we don't have any idea right now if they're gonna come down from the grander down and they go up or they're gonna kind of start in the middle and.
No, they they always start low, so they'll they'll start at the intersection. I mean, that's, that's ninety nine percent of the time, that's how they do that, if there's other specific reasons, it's just so things tie in and everything else. So. And because of the timeframe of the project, it's gonna have to start before school. It's all. But, you know, they may have a plan where they're gonna bring in multiple crews and they're, you know, they're gonna, they don't want to deal with the headaches and, you know, you know, so they may start a little later, but we won't know that until. Have a contractor and see what their thoughts are. Um, yeah, other than that, most of the stuff I have is on the agenda. Specific questions? This time.
No, I'm good. I have my first specific agenda items. I got one for you.
There.
All right, we'll move on to the Main Street Bridge Plan Approval and Bit Authorization.
So I did bring ten copies of that. So I can, okay, I can provide those, see if I have. So I can, okay, I can provide those, see, I guess. So. Well, you know, essentially what we're seeking is a. By approval and bid authorization at this time. This is the bulk of the plans, you know, as as we discussed, we're we're gonna be, we're gonna be uh alternate bidding two different rail types. I don't know if you want me to walk through this plan set, but essentially what what you have here is uh, you know, the first couple pages are the detour, okay? And and then you have the sewer and the water plants to replace the uh, the stuff hanging off the bridge. And then you you get into the details and the plan for rehabbing the deck and. The fencing, so I mean, that that's what the project is in a nutshell, uh we are seeking, you know, what we'd like you to do on uh. At your board meeting is approved plans authorized bidding, so we can open the bid on the fourteenth of February along with the Churchill. So that it'll be open the same day that you have the uh, the uh. The Churchill, the WISDA will be opening their bids at the same time, you know, roughly the same day. So contractors are aware that they're going out there. So I, you know, nothing uh. True extraordinary about it, I mean, it's, it's gonna be replacing sewer and water that's there, you know, replacing in kind. And uh, and we have into that, so.
You have any estimates on that one at all?
Um I haven't seen the revised estimate, but I'll be sure to bring that to you uh for your board meeting, guys.
Could you email it prior to, or we guys?
I don't know, obviously, I don't know, things I met, talked to Bob last year and everything too, it's the hundred and ninetieth. Detour is a major concern of mine, in part because I live in the area, in part because it's, that road is. Little sketch, you know, and for that being a detour and stuff, there I know there's some. Uh work that was gonna be done on it this year, but the county didn't have the opportunity, that's what it was, right, the county did not have the equipment available, so. That's gonna hopefully have to be a first thing this spring. Tear the top off and widen that a little bit. Are they looking at putting stop signs, have you heard anything about that, you know, at the bottom of that, yes?
And then it's all, I think they're ready to go on what, the lighting and.
And then we probably, I don't know, we may need to look at some of the trees along that, because you do have to. Anything else on that?
No, unless there's questions.
Uh next up, professional service agreements, bringing mainstream improvements.
So what we have here is a uh. Professional service agreement uh for, for the project design and bidding. It's sixty-six thousand dollars on some, and then the estimated construction phase is eleven thousand dollars and. You know, the the construction phase is estimated right now currently and, you know, we can see how much, you know. If if head staff can handle more of it, they'll do more of it, you know, but there's a lot going on next summer too, so. We anticipate we'll have some level of of involvement uh on this project and, you know, this pro- this project. Includes um the design, you know, surveying the design for the right turn lane here, oh, that Spring Street.
Do we, do we have that land acquired?
Not yet.
Why are we going to have that land acquired for that?
That's the whole.
Well, I understand that, but I hate just, we're engineering for something that we, we don't even. We're engineering for something we don't even have in in our, you know, the ability to to change anything on.
Is there a contingency? Well, the thought is, is that uh. You know, you would, you would bid the other work as naturally, and so if you don't have everything in place. You don't necessarily have to do one or the other. You know, eventually something needs to be done at that intersection if you're ever gonna have trucks going through there, so. It's, it's a, it's a good fair point, Donnie, of whether or not you want it designed now, so you're ready to go. Um since you are actively looking to acquire that land. Um but, yeah, there is that possibility that you'll have to shelf it for a period of time. So um certainly, um you could hold off the design and do the other improvements, but, you know, this is the optimal time. Twenty twenty-three to do that, since you'll have that bridge down this summer. So uh again, anything that could happen to acquire that corner, I would certainly encourage it, you know, we'd like to get the design on the shelf or. In the queue, so you are ready to complete that this year while, you know, no one's, no one's driving down Main Street where, you know, we have. Really good access and the ability to to construct it and you get your best price because you won't have to. Build it under traffic and have flaggers or, you know, bring it down to one lane and, you know, disrupt and potentially have. You know, detours for, you know, another year down the road. So the contingency is, excuse me, we would do nothing at at that particular spot. Yeah, you would just shelve the design, potentially shelve the design and then, you know, just do the other uh.
So what I asked them to do is move forward with the design, so we had it. And it was encompassing the same area, so I think for cost and effort, they're looking at the same. You know, area to do some of the sidewalk repairs, so it was like, well, let's just do this too, um so that way we have a design. And then we can just move into a bit of a process if um we're not successful, successful on acquiring the right away that we need. That was my logic behind that. It's not wait with that. Right, cause that was the concrete stuff for the sidewalks and we broke that we were looking at doing this last year that we held up on.
Yep, all that, those portions, the portions that you didn't do last year, we, you know, the the. The couple areas we did change order into another project last year, but the remaining areas still need to be done. And then also we've added that that median near the uh removal of that median near the cemetery.
What, do we, do we have an estimate on removing that median as well because we're gonna bring that uh. To the um.
Certainly, you know, be, before your authorized bidding, we'll have a good estimate for you that. We don't have one at this time.
Well, we are, we're gonna engineer to take out something that's already in there. I I, you know, and that, that's what you had mentioned, it was gonna be like, originally, they were talking estimates of uh twelve to fifteen thousand. You said it's probably gonna be around six thousand, I'm going, well, you know, we are, we're gonna spend the money to take out something that really isn't. Isn't a safety concern, it's just we're spending the money to remove something, uh you know, I wouldn't look at that, that intersection up there and I. I, you know, don't see where um. Other than them hitting a a light pole. Um pulling out that, pulling out that island at the entrance into the deal, it's it's basically, we're spending money that we've already. Spent to put it in to tear it out now.
Well, that was one of my concerns, right, is that it seemed like a couple times a year, people were hitting the light pole or whatever, not at that time, but every year, if not. Every two years.
The cost is how much?
A lot of money.
Twenty.
And the thing is that somebody's gonna get hurt eventually on that, I don't know why, that people not know to say that, there's a tree of light, I I just don't know what they're doing. The other problem we have is one of our businesses cannot take a, execute a right hand turn on a parking lot.
Yeah, and they have larger equipment, they need to get out of there, right?
So it's a little bit inconvenient for them.
And if you don't constantly replace that light, there's a potential, you know, liability if if, you know, you just decide to not have that. Lighted or it's out and that, you know, and somebody does run into it, you know, I don't know if they're opening up the city.
And there's, there's also polls on that intersection as well.
Let's be fair, they took one of them right here, it's a poorly stock.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, for the, for the, for the traffic, you know, the truck movements and everything else, it, you know, it's just, it's. You know, the ongoing maintenance, that if it's just gone. You invest that money now, you remove it, you know, those outgoing costs no longer exist.
The biggest thing is why didn't we put that there? Was there a reason?
So when you get your time, just slow down, we'll talk to us.
That's why.
People can't drive.
So once they take that out, they've actually made return lanes at the deal?
Yep, yep, and then that, the company there could take a, I don't, what's that name of that company there?
I'll follow that.
Oh, yeah, they can take a left-hand turn out of there that, cause they.
What's the name of the company?
Okay, is there anything else on that one or?
Next item. Professional Services Agreement Erosion Repairs and Pond Drive.
Did you have the, the map up?
Yeah, yes, um can I share?
Yo, you're sharing already. He'll ask to share.
It says it's disabled.
No, hit X, yes.
Like this?
Yes, go. To Chuck. Oh, that's Chuck's in the.
Right in the middle. It's the big C there, that's me.
Oh. I thought you just went down here and then it.
That's if you wanna share.
Oh, there you go, yeah, it's advanced sharing of, uh multiple participants.
One participant on share at a time.
Maybe multiple participants. Advanced sharing of.
Are you okay to know?
No, I can. All right, it's not the most eloquent map, but it uh serves a purpose, uh so what you have here is you have the Whispering Pines Pond up here. Okay, and in that northerly development, uh the village park is is this pond down by the ball fields. Okay. Bob and I talked, we we we've removed this from the scope, this Somerset business, this one. But Larry Forrest Pond and then the Somerset Metalist Pond. In the River Hills. Yeah, it sits down here where my hand is.
Oh, yeah, that pond gets pretty full, there's some people that got deck furniture by the edge of that pond, sometimes it. Will take any water we can get here, you know.
So, yeah, that's the pond there. And, you know, so there's a. You know, so we, so we worked up the scope of what is, you know, essentially for that, the ponds, cause there's also a couple outfalls. Oh, I I didn't notice that until late, Brandon, that you were, you were requesting pictures of the outfall erosion.
Yeah, yep.
I'll bring that.
Did you send all my questions over?
I I did, yes. Um so, you know, the drainage evaluation is the first thing you gotta do, and as far as um. Uh that, the permitting and that front end stuff, that needs to be done by an engineer or hydrogeologist or soil scientist.
Okay, so we can't do it?
No, Bob can't do it.
Oh, damn.
And, you know, essentially what you have to do is you have to look at the entire watershed that's flowing to that pond. And uh, you know, make an assessment of, you know, research what spills have occurred, what types of businesses are there, what's the land use? And there's this whole checklist and various categories to determine if it meet, it rises to a level where. They're gonna force you to take some sampling and 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 see how much nasty stuff is in it.
Are we doing, are we doing an all encompassing survey of um? The village for part of the comprehensive plan, isn't that part of the, part of what we're paying for with the comprehensive plan?
Uh what kind of survey are you talking about?
So when I look through our, so I look, when I look through their current comprehensive plan, we have um. Studies of the altitude, uh and they have all kinds of maps in there and stuff. Is that something that we can glean from the?
Well, to your point, that's necessarily the comprehensive plan, but. Uh you do have a surface water management plan. That has identified the watersheds that flow to each one of these ponds, so we put that together, we have all that information. Yeah, but you have to go through and you have to look at everything that's in that. Um in those watersheds to see what the land uses are and, you know. Spill data and, you know, whatever else to see, you know, the, the likelihood or the potential of what's going in there.
So we're gauging risk.
Yeah, and if it rises to a certain level or one of the fourth threshold is met, then the DNR is gonna say, you know what, you're gonna have to hire a geologist. Or a geotechnical consultant or an environmental engineer to go out there and 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 take.
Do the test sample. Yeah, because that's a, and why, why was the River Hills one thirty-six hundred dollars and the rest of them like twenty-five?
That's just a bigger pond, and, you know, and we're estimating what it would cost. Um, you know, I didn't go so far as to say, talk to one of my environmental folks or talk to another geotechnical engineer to say. If we have to do this, what, what's it gonna cost? We just said it's a, you know, it's this size acreage, it's probably gonna, it's gonna be in this neighborhood, just to give you an idea. Hopefully, we don't anticipate that rising to a level where you're gonna have to do that, but it may. So we just wanted to forewarn you that there's this other cost that may loom out there.
Right, so the cost potentially of just looking at dredging the ponds, not even dredging them. For all those ponds that are up there is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars, that's without even taking out any sand or silt. About any construction.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm always gonna find that, I could put up to that.
That's about right.
Yeah, and and so that was the, that one twenty-nine, was that for the outfalls and the?
Outfall improvements or trail improvements are included in that as well.
So, yes, I did. So, so we did break it down, and so, it's like, okay, what, if you decided just to do River Hills, for instance, okay? That's that twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars, and so what are you getting for that? Well, you're getting the permitting, the review, you know, that, that. Technical evaluation of the watershed and 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 going through all those land uses and all that reporting and everything else. Um you're also getting um going out there and 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 surveying the bottom, you know, with a surveyor, getting in a hole. And, you know, and poking around to see how much sediment has filled in. Uh because you have to, you know, essentially, and then also, once you have that. You know, you have to know, okay, here's the, the existing surface, here's, you know. Where are you gonna, the DNR is gonna wanna see what the plan is, you know, you can't just, oh, we're gonna take out a bunch of fill. You know, you have to create a proposed surface so they, so you can tell, so you're doing plans and specs as well, right? So in that number is plans and specifications to say contractor, this is how much sediment we want you to remove in in these areas. And then there's also construction admin in there. Um to to help with the paperwork, not to stand out there and watch and do that, Bob could do that. Uh but that's essentially.
I I can watch. Right on top of the hill, I can watch.
So, so.
Yeah, everyone take a pond, yeah.
You know, and so there's, there's permitting on the front end to see if you have to do that, you know, that higher level. Because if you do have that higher level and you do have some nastiness in there, you know, then you may have to landfill it, uh otherwise you can, you know. We can work with Bob and figure out where the home is gonna be.
It's gotta be someplace we can put it.
Sure, as long as it's not full of nastiness.
We, Chuck, we had talked um. Before about uh that this was um going to happen with these, uh the dredging here, uh possibly this year. Um is any of this uh, any of these costs or anything like that been put into our budget or factored into the budget for this year? Because that seems like that's a pretty steep uh amount uh for, for, for this and uh whether or not we're budgeted for it.
Have money set aside and I'll, I don't know exactly, I've tapped my head, Andrea and I can work on that next week, um, Donnie and, and see where we're at.
So we don't know, we're not, we're not completely, we don't know if we're budgeted up out for that yet?
I don't know, I don't have a, a good guess on that, but we allocate money at that end of the year.
Do you have a pond that you have one you wanna do first?
There's priorities on this, for sure.
Okay, how many of those you wanna get done?
They're not the ponds. It's, it's our outfall on the rivers. There's a trail across, we're just right across from here. That's washed out, been washed out for.
And that's one of them.
A decade. And then we have the issue with their pond or washout. That was quasi repaired, um, on the, this side of the river.
Okay, so we've got some we've gotta address.
Those are the, the two areas.
We're looking at about twenty-four thousand?
Well, I would, I would say double that because you also have the, the, the village park pond capacity and redesign. They kinda go hand in hand, Donnie. Uh, because the, the pond's undersized now. It was never, in my opinion, it wasn't, you know, it was never sized properly. And so that's part of the problem.
Who sized the fir-, who sized the first one?
Who designed the first one? Our former engineers.
Cedar Crest.
Cedar Corp.
Cedar Corp. Yes, Cedar Corp.
So, you know, if it's, so if it's not handling the storms that should be designed for, then that's, you know. Kind of goes hand in hand causing the erosion. So you really, you really need to understand and, and come into a determination of. What that pond should be before you, you fix the outfall.
You ever get sick of fixing Cedar Corp stuff? Oh, can't say that, sorry, oh, sorry. Sorry.
Oh. There's four criteria. One, the biggest one is if it's an industrial area, that we, it's fifty percent of the land use. So if it's in an industrial area, fifty percent of the total watershed. That's one of the triggers where they're gonna say, well, there might be some, some heavy metals and some other contaminants that we don't want you to just land apply anywhere.
Like PHs and some of those things you've heard of.
PFOS or anything like that.
Where would they come?
Um, types of manufacturing that we don't have in, in the community, um, textile companies. Cemetery, so another one where, you know, you get some flooding, you get some. I don't think any of these residential, residential ponds are gonna trigger any of those, so I don't expect any to go. Of where we were on those. So, I think we're safe, you know?
But if we do come across some spills or some other things that, you know, may have occurred or what have you, just, but you have to go through the exercise of doing all that.
Spills.
Yeah, you know.
There, there was a.
Have we had?
Well, the tire fires basically are biggest concern or could have some PFOS, but. Right now, we.
But, um, check, I did, I just send this them additional information.
Okay.
So they can read over that?
Yeah, it did make reference to one of the changes. I, I do have a revised copy and I could send that to you, Felicia. Um, because we did remove Somerset distance and.
On this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and so it makes reference to it, a few locations and.
So can we get a wishlist, which. Pond you'd like to pump first, and then we'll, we'll work on, start working on that list? Maybe because we'll get a wishlist, because I hope that will, all these aren't.
So, all their ponds are, they're still performing. It's just something that I kinda wanted to get in front of the board, so. They knew that in the near future, these things need to be maintained.
Yeah, let's start knocking them off, maybe one.
Our, our biggest priority is, is our, are these two, three, right here.
And those are, we have to fix those because we.
There's, it's a hazard, there's a trail where the tourists are trying to walk and they can't, so it's a disaster.
Safety, yeah, good.
Not to put words in your mouth or anything, is probably up the cuff is River Hills then kind of second in line after you do the village stuff.
Yeah, yeah. You guys do that, just.
That's just where the most of the instructions occur, though, so that's where your severance is. No matter.
Yeah, there's a lot of, so like I said, they're not doing the sod, they're leaving the yard, they're leaving the yard, they're not putting the sod down and all the, the silt's washing away. My whole neighbor's, all the black dirt from my neighbor's yard washed into mine, so it worked out good for me. It didn't go into the pond.
Well. And quite frankly, I mean, that's what the pond is intended for, not to take the construction up, but, you know, they. They have the storage and, and, you know, they, they all eventually settled in because that's what you wanted to do, you wanted to capture that. Remove the phosphorus.
I think it's important also to, I just wanna echo it, it, getting the wishlist together is a good thing. Uh, but also looking at what we have, uh, set aside for our budget and what we could set aside for future budgets so that we're not. You know, over exceeding what we've already kind of looked at for this year.
You know, again, I apologize, you know, Bob, Bob saw this thirty seconds before you did, so he didn't even have time to. To digest it and to kind of prioritize and do some of that back and forth.
Real quick, last question that I have on it is, from a standpoint though. What's an anticipated, um, review timeframe that you would expect on these? So that we should look at them every five years, three years, ten years? That we should kind of review where the sediment plan is at for each of these?
You know, that's.
Once it's built up. I mean, uh, once you have everything around it, that's there.
You know, Bob, and it's true, do visual inspections, you know, I don't think there's that's kind of a set time because there are, there are so, so different, Doug.
Okay, and, uh, once you have a full development, you have grass that's, you know, basically taking the sediment for catches. Those ponds, they're really quick. But it's when you. That first storm and it's grown.
Are we taking into account the extra, a lot of people have, uh, automatic watering, they got sprinkler systems, you know, it's a lot of extra. So there's a lot of extra water.
But it's clean. So, it doesn't infect the.
And we get to charge.
The infiltration rate's not affected by that because you're not getting, uh, you know, basically a heavy bottom, so. You know, rely on, you know, some perky going on those ponds. At certain times, let me change this, the sediment on the bottom of it, you start eliminating that.
You know, a perfect scenario, you got a lush green golf course of a yard. You know, none of that topsoil is washing away. No matter how much they water.
When's the last time that you trust any of these?
The bills is better.
Never, none of them.
There really hasn't been too much of a need. You know, so, a lot of these, like I said, are still functioning, but we just wanted to kind of put. That's what I asked for is, let's identify our, our major pond systems and get, so we understand what it's gonna cost, but cost time. So, those are all infiltration based and so they're not landlocked. So, you know, we still have the overflow ability if it rains ten inches, it's not gonna flood anywhere else, so.
So how good does, how long is this installation?
I mean, we're just checking it out now, it's not getting done, say a year, two years. Is that, is this done, taken care of now? Now they can just bring dredger into it?
This is all that the professional services related to doing that. So, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest you do anything until, you know, I wouldn't spend the effort on.
Getting a permit, because that includes getting a permit.
Yeah.
Those costs that could get.
What do you mean? Because I thought this was just basically to get it all the information.
Oh, no, you gotta get the permits too. Part of that is applying for the permits.
I think, I think what you're saying is that they're not gonna start doing any of that data. Until.
I'm just saying, once they want to do this data, is it good until we decide to do the work?
But they're not gonna do it though until you do the work, right?
Yeah, that's what I would hold off. I wouldn't do anything, I wouldn't work ahead of time, okay?
It's not like the design.
This is just.
Right, because they're, they are, they are really, with the exception of the village park pond and the outfall, they're connected. The rest of them are really just individual projects.
Okay, yeah, so I was just hoping this would give the board some information that when it comes time to budgeting that. When the board's brought up and I'm like, hey, I need sixty thousand dollars, understand where, why, I like it.
Okay.
Makes sense.
You got anything else, Donnie?
No, I'm good on it. See what they have for a wishlist and, uh, and, uh, where it fits into our budget and we can address it at the, at the meeting.
So, okay, so, so I'm tasked with, I'll get a, I'll get a revised, um.
Exhibit A.
Exhibit A to Felicia, to share prior to the meeting. I'll, I'll, uh.
Do a wishlist.
Yep, Bob will do the wishlist, so Bob and I will work on it together.
And he'll talk to Andrea.
And he'll talk to Andrea. And then, uh, um, we'll get some pictures out too, before, ahead of the meeting, so you can see what those outfalls, the erosion looks like.
Yeah, that's great because that helps us make our case to junkie public, when we say, you know, we're. We're dredging out the ponds and obviously we have to do it, you know, this is why.
You know, I was just, I was gonna do pictures of the outfall, not the ponds themselves, if that's okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Show me the dangerous stuff, the worst stuff that early days were done.
Yeah.
Let's move on to, uh, discussion roundabout sunrise drive.
Three minutes on, but he kinda already.
Yeah, he already kinda said his.
Yeah.
His piece.
I have one question. I, I've driven several of these roundabouts in other areas and especially with, uh, crosswalks and everything. And these, uh, other areas with roundabouts where they have excessive traffic like that one there. They, they have lights that flash when people get close to that area. And kind of like warn people to slow down, look for. You know, um, individuals crossing in the crosswalks and, and the like. Um, is there any thought to that, uh, putting up some kind of a, of a, you know. At least a, you know, flashing amber light, lights or something to that effect? And I know lights are expensive, but, uh, honestly, you know.
There's lights going to this.
There's lights, just as you're describing that are there now.
They're not flashing though.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they're.
I've not, I've never seen them.
At this one, there are, I, I've seen that a few times. Well, I know one of the things that we talked about from your standpoint, even the intersection is to have.
I was gonna share some other things, but actually.
Is possibly to take a look at the crosswalks and if you can take and do a raised. Crosswalk, if you will, sort of transitions instead of, you know, even make it where there's. Kind of a hump, not something where it's a true, uh, speed bump, but something to get people to try and slow down a little bit, soft speed bump. Kind of, yeah. So, I mean, that's, I know that's something that Bob and I had talked about a little bit, of course, the last week, but.
So let's step, step back a little bit, you know, I appreciate Brandon bringing this up, you know, his concerns are. Um, you know, there's, there's no one perfect fit for all type of situations, okay? And, um, so, in general, I've, I've got a few slides here that talks about. How the functionality, some of these things, and again, no intersection is perfect for anybody. But if you look at kind of your, your standard intersection here and, and you have a crosswalk. You know, some of the concerns with your traditional lights is that you have a. You know, an exaggerated level of security because, oh, you've got, says I can walk, and then you've got cars. Maybe not seeing them or turning, so there's a potential hazard there. Um, and, you know, most cars, most accidents happen when, when somebody's crossing and there's, you know, cars turning and things. And red lights, runnings, you know, result in the most severe pedestrian accidents, and, you know, so that's some of the concerns of a signal at the intersection.
Um, with the signal, the signal lights is, I mean, costs a lot of money to maintain those lights, right? They're, they're getting hit, um.
Yeah.
Get hit, knocked out, and if they do go out of commission, that's also a safety risk too, right? And the light's out.
Yeah, and, and you know, you've got the ongoing cost of maintenance and, you know, some of those things. And, you know, if we were to rip out the intersection and put in lights, you know, you'll probably look at seven hundred thousand dollars. To do that, just to give you an idea of what.
Say again?
Seven hundred thousand dollars to redo that intersection twice. And take out, uh, roundabout. Just, just to give you, that, that question was raised, so I thought I would just.
Seven hundred?
Yeah.
Thousand?
Yeah. So, you know, so one of the things that. You know, some of the pluses with roundabouts is, you know, the, the level of pedestrians. Feeling for security more closely matches the actual level of safety. You know, you, you're kind of like. You're engaged a little more, right? Because you got a car coming up and you're like, oh, is this a good time? Does he, you know, have we made eye contact? Is he, is he traveling fast, whatever, you know? So there's, now again, this is around a school, so there's kids, and so you don't get that, you know, that, that level of, you know, intellectual media.
So, should the school, so to me, it sounds like there's some responsibility should, or we should work hand in hand with the school, um. Kind of train the kids how to walk through roundabouts, possibly we could start, um. So, because part of the problem is there's a lot of traffic up there, right? So there's a lot of people dropping their kids off and stuff like that, like, couldn't these kids be riding the bus, like?
That's a, that's a.
Yeah.
It's a different conversation.
Yeah, but I mean, we, we all gotta work, like, we all gotta work together to make the community safer, right? And the root cause of it would be a lower trap, would they bring the traffic down, teach the kids how to walk through the roundabout, teach the kids how to drive through roundabouts.
That's great until you got like thirty-five hundred percent of people that come through here that still live here and they're not.
The school that was crossing yards in the morning and at night.
Yeah, and, you know, some of the things like Bob suggested is, you know, we, there could be a path on the other side of the pond. You know, so that, so the kids could be encouraged to go around the pond and not cross at the intersection there.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and so adding that to the court, you know, you're, so for a future, you know, trail improvements, that would be something you could consider. So, that, you know, that's, that's, that's one thing we could take and look at. You know, we haven't looked at the hard data, you know, there's anecdotal data. Um, and, you know, I, I don't know what the school does, next time we have, maybe we can bring that up as a topic of.
I talked to Shannon about it, she said, she didn't have any, she didn't hear of any concerns. She's like, there's people I like and people I love. She's, and, uh, which is, I don't know of any close call situations we've had with. School age children that are walking, but she did agree that there's, you know. Makes some sense to go around because right now the elementary kids have to cross the roundabout, walk up the trail and then cross again by the, uh, visitor's side by the football.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So she was, that would at least eliminate them from crossing. Again.
Yeah, because that, because they put another stop sign in up there.
Again, it was the, um. Basically our middle school children are probably the bigger walkers, so that's the biggest under traffic, which. It's logical for them to cross where they're on the boat.
Has there been a number of accidents, uh, that have occurred at that, at that, um, roundabout there?
You know, we, that research has not been done yet, so.
Like, I could talk with Joel and see if he's had a lot of calls for service there.
Right, well, I meant, Brandon said that, you know, there's been a lot of close calls, a lot of fender betters in his email and, and in a statement. I'm just wondering if, uh, if we have a lot of documentation from, from the police of, of. You know, incidents where people have, have had accidents in that area.
Yeah, I think that's something we'll have to get from, as Bob said, from Joel. Joel's not, uh, here this evening that I'm aware of. I, he was out of town, I believe, this week.
He's out of town.
So, um, but we can have that and should be able to have that, I would think, next week or in the next couple of weeks.
You know, just to kind of talk a little bit more about the intent of pedestrians and roundabout is, you know, one of the benefits is you got. You know, them crossing, they only have to look one way till they get to the median, so that, you know, they're not looking both ways. They can look to their left when they're crossing here, and then once they get to this median, they can look right, you know? So you don't, you have a shorter distance to cross. To safety, so to speak, so that, that's one of the advantages as well as, as, uh, the crossing. But I do agree that if you, another trail option, um. Would be advantageous, uh, for those elementary kids.
Isn't there some, isn't there a star, star strand that kind of is, um. Kind of like the TAP grant that allows rural communities to tie in, um, schools.
Safe routes to school?
Yeah, is it stars or, is it stars or sars or?
Safe routes to school.
Yeah. So is there, there's grant, there's potential grant funding that opens, opens up for that?
Yeah, and what, you know, what, what needs to occur is we need to put that into your, to your corp. Revised, you know, next time you update your, your, that's your.
Conference of all the recreation.
Yeah, cool. So you get that in there as a priority. And that'll just help your, your grant application. And, uh, you know, the competitiveness of it, but.
It's a perfect action item, then. Does someone take that as an action item, uh?
Well.
When we do our, when we do our.
Corp's gonna come up this year.
Okay.
So we'll be working on that.
Okay.
A two-year document.
You know, and, and in the meantime, you know, there, there, you know, we can do that, look into it a little bit to see how much of an issue it is or, you know, as, as far as what we can. What information's out there and provide that and, and, you know, if it is a. You know, if, if there is that. You know, if, if there is evidence of an issue, that's just gonna make your grant application rise all that much higher.
So do you want us to keep looking at some alternatives or?
I like the trail. I think we do the trail. Put that into it, but I think, yeah, some should be proactive with the school, we're going to the school and um.
I mean, I think that working with the school definitely is something that we wanna do and need to do. I think there also should be some stuff, is there ways that we can look to? Help it not be a racetrack, obviously, there's, that's a problem that we're struggling with and every community is right now, right, is people driving faster than they should, so. Is there something that we can do that's not outlandish, outlandishly expensive, like seven hundred thousand dollars? You know, if there's something, if there's options, great, if there's not, okay, fine, but at least look at them and see what sort of things that we can potentially do. That could help alleviate that a little bit.
Traffic's, traffic's.
Biggest concern was actually car and cargo, right?
I think it was all the above.
What issues happen? I mean, we have anecdotes. Has anybody been hit?
I don't see anything.
Wait a minute, what?
I don't know about any of theirs.
Have any, have any kids been street hurt or injured at that intersection since uh? You know, and some of it comes out to enforcement too, cause it is twenty five miles an hour down there. You, you have to try hard to drive twenty five miles an hour.
It doesn't slow down when it's cool? Oh, yeah, it stops.
You know, there's concerns and all that stuff, see if they can do some targeted enforcement out there and obviously pull some numbers and data, I think that'd be very nice. Could you maybe get some uh, maybe from the school, have them ask? You know, what education they do or, or if there's been issues or when do they do the uh, when do they have flaggers out there from what time to what time?
Yeah, ask the, the crossing guards, you know.
Crossing guards, yeah.
Good interview though.
Sure.
Real quick, Mike, you had said something earlier, what were you?
Um, just that they have crossing guards in before and after school.
That's right there, right?
Yeah.
Well, I know that was something that Brandon brought up in his email, was when the crossing guards aren't there.
Okay.
You know, is there something, there's, it's a concern there, and so part of it is, yeah, there may not have been incidents right now with kids, but it's. Well, I assume you wanna do, obviously, is wait for one to happen either. If there's something that we can do, we can't fix everything, we can't eliminate risk. It's how we mediate it as much as possible without going overboard and doing something that's not necessary, that's not necessary as well, so. How I look at it.
Seems like we've got multiple solutions too.
Yeah, I think it's a lot of things that we can look at. Nothing has to be done immediately, it's just something, okay, what can we do to help?
Do you want me to keep this on the agenda for next work session?
And you know, and the, the whole, one of the advantages supposedly of a roundabout is, is accidents are generally less severe. Somebody running a red light, you know, that's, that's where deaths and people and things, so, yeah, is there, could there be more vendor vendors possibly?
I mean, I was just someone the other day and someone stopped while they were the one in the roundabout waiting, it's like.
Some people try to be nice and you're like, no, just, if you're doing nice, if he doesn't work it the way you're supposed to.
Call the Wisconsin stand up.
And there's a thing, and I'm not, if you scroll up a little bit to your map or you have to show them a roundabout, one of the things that. And I'm not advocating for this or saying to do here either, but I've seen in other places and. Work travels like in Hong Kong where they have stuff where a lot of busy intersections, they actually have fences around those areas, so they kind of guard. The pedestrians, so they get up, they cross that per section, now they're in the median, they're in an area where they're protected, so. A car doesn't just try and squeeze in somewhere and bump up and then hit somebody that's on on median. Again, I'm not saying that we need to do that, but that's something that, if it comes up in the future, might be something that we look at. I don't know that, you know, we're still growing community, so it might be needed some point, might not, but there's something that I've seen in other places.
But I think what Donnie was trying to say is like downtown River Falls, they have uh uh crosswalks where. Um, it gets a yellow flashing, and then they have little flags on each side of the road and you bring it to the other side and. Like five flags on each side where kids walk back and forth, I think that's what Donnie's trying to say.
I think they have that at the apartment building they're having.
The yellow pedestrian.
We'll get the flags, the flags.
You know, I, I know they have River Falls, they have a lot of flashing around the colleges and things, but it's, it's amazing, those college kids just. Are so emboldened just to walk out in front of you, you know, yeah, they're in the right, that doesn't make them any less deadly, you know, you know, so.
Yeah. We'll move on to discussion, pay app number five, stop construction company.
So, pay application five is for a time that occurred essentially in October. Uh, we now have all the documentation submitted and reviewed uh that was required. Yeah, this pay application is for two hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars and forty five cents. And it's primarily work for poured concrete and replacing, you know, for the uh. For the sledge storage tank and pump building.
Do we need a recommendation from this uh uh committee of the whole for this, or is this something that can be brought forth at the, at the meeting to, to pay?
Is there any questions, I guess? Um, and very similarly.
And so, Donnie, just real quick, we don't, we don't really need a recommendation, we're all here, if someone, I think, was saying. Having negative comments or thoughts, we should be doing that now and otherwise, basically, we're at. Come next Tuesday, we're just saying it, like, no one was really against it, let's go for a vote on it.
On the two pay applications that are put forth on the agenda and the question to Chuck is, is are you recommending them paid because there, everything is in order uh from your end?
Yeah, so that's, you know, normally it's for the previous month, and that pay application five is for October because. We had a poll from the agenda in November and we had a poll from the agenda in December because they didn't have all the. Their documentation in order and the wage verifications that they, they paid their employees properly and yada, yada, yada. Now that we have it, October, we also have November, so we are recommending that you, you approve uh both of these. Uh, pay application six is for three hundred and eighty six thousand, three hundred and sixty two dollars and ninety one cents. Um, it is for November work, and you know, it's, it's primarily revolves around uh completing the masonry, brass. Black and concrete roof for the new pump building, um and they also done some work in the uh. Plumbing work in the headworks building. Prepared the suburbs for the general. Oh, it's in the letter, I, I have three copies for you there.
Yeah, take it.
So, I'll, I'll provide those to you. Uh, but it's, it is also, if you wanna dig into the uh, into the pay application themselves, you can see where the money is allocated for this month. And the percentages, it's broken down in there. Any questions you like, uh regarding the application six? If not, you can move on to public safety, I guess.
And I, he's not here to answer anything, so I wanna review it.
Or Joel?
Oh, yeah, just the December incident report.
So just something you can review and.
So I just have a comment on this one quick, so um trustee Todd Lee and myself went on a ride along. With um the chief on Friday, um, we had a really good time, it was fun, uh it was very busy. Uh, these guys do a heck of a job um all by themselves, um, and yeah, it's a tough job, um. So, um, anyone from the public can do a ride along, you mentioned, uh they just gotta fill out the proper paperwork, and I would encourage. Everybody to do that, um, cause it's an eye-opening experience, um, our cops do a lot for us and, uh, we really appreciate them as much as possible. Um, I am putting together a YouTube video of our uh, of our ride along, so that'll be done hopefully this week. So everyone had something to see. Uh, Todd was in the backseat for the beginning, and then I was in the backseat. Uh, we even had an appearance by the fire chief as well, so we had the chief of police and the chief of fire there at the same time. Yeah, and boy, there's a healthy competition there, guys. A little uh competition between the fire boys and the police, I didn't know that.
Municipality, but I see.
But I get a copy of the incident report, put in my uh mailbox for review when I get back in town.
Yeah, I think I sent it to you.
Via email?
I think I did, if not, I will put it in your, I do have one in your box already.
That's great, thanks.
I have your whole package in there, Donnie.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So that covers public safety, incident reports, unfinished business, there's nothing really on that, right?
League hasn't issued any, no update there, more discussion.
Um, next.
I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that, what was that?
Uh, league hasn't issued any opinion, uh so no, no update, no discussion. Uh, new business, we discussed A, B is discussion, community garden, Brandon?
Yeah, I put this one on there too, um, so I would like to get together a community garden, um. I don't know if we've ever, so I just kinda wanna have a discussion about that, see if we've ever tried that before, um. And I would just like to, I kind of put it on the agenda as an item, because sometimes you get it, something on the agenda and people kind of start talking about it. Um, I have talked to some people, uh business folks in the community, and they said they'd be open to have some uh land for us. Um, so I would kind of like to us to work with the school and then also to work with uh maybe the library. Um, to see if we could drum up support, um. There's um all kinds of stuff out there for getting free seeds, free soil, all of those kinds of things. I'd even like to see if we could um obtain some of, some fertilizer from the Ellsworth facility, so we could have some of our own sludge. Our garden, um.
You deliver it.
I'll, I'll go get it, I wanna go see it, you know, you know, me and Poop have a, a, we talk about it quite a bit, yeah, we're tight, yeah. Um, so I guess this is this, anyone who's listening, and then also, um, this will be on YouTube. Um, if anyone's interested in that, um, you can email me at uh my village um address, and then. I don't know if we can have a meeting with Shannon or um something like that, so another thing that kind of ties into it. Um, is, and I know I emailed you about this as well, is if we do get the community garden going, we get the school involved, we can um get the farm to school grant. Um, and then I also think it's just great for kids to learn how to, they should know how to grow their own food, um, and all that kind of stuff. Um, so maybe you and I can work together and maybe set up a meeting with Shannon or get a point person for that. Um, and then maybe the library, like.
See where they're at.
Okay, so imagine they probably got some gardeners from there at the library.
It's not that they have books.
They got books for sure, well, I have one, so I've already picked a book out, the square, square foot gardening, that's what I wanna go with, but. Um, we can get copies of those books for everybody, but, um, so I guess that's it for the discussion on that.
You can also get fertilizer, maybe if you don't go that direction, if they don't, is the university.
Universities, okay. Yeah, I want some, no, I wanna get some of the elsewhere stuff, because we pay a lot, you know, we pay a lot of money to trucker stuff down there.
Pay a lot of money to bring it back.
Get it, I'll go down and get it myself, I'll go down and get it. Um, I guess that's all I got on that, hopefully some people will uh reach out to me, um, e- email, um, we'll get this on YouTube and on the. Everyone on Joe there, um, so yeah.
I mean, I think that's a, it's a neat idea, it's a cool thing, you see it in some places and, and they find out and they get ways and brings people together a bit. And like you said, it's a good learning opportunity for kids and schools, and they can start seeds in school and then kind of see how it goes throughout the summer and, and learn some different things, so. And not everyone has, they might be in an apartment or they might have a small lot, they can't grow stuff, but they'd like to be able to do that, so I think it's a, it's a nice idea. Any other comments on them, Mike?
The elementary has um a community garden for the last eight years that the hideaway sponsors. Fill it up and bring commoner from the Noss's place and pay for all the seed and everything, so.
Actually, I started one, involved in it, lasted about two years, there's a lot of money and people lose interest. There are a lot of money.
Okay.
I think it ended up somewhere, anyway, it just, make sure you do your research. Yeah.
Well, we'd love to have your, if you have any input or any of your successes or any of your failures, we'd love to, we'd love to hear from you.
You know, Eau Claire has quite a few community gardeners in the council, people uh. Are active in them, so, yeah, if you're looking to the broader um community, I. He said connections with Eau Claire, put you folks in contact.
Sort of we drew up that, we drew up that meeting, actually, as Todd Streeter, he has that guy who did all that, he could help you.
Okay. Yeah, I was planning on stopping up at the comprehensive, or at the, the meeting tomorrow, stopping, so.
Here in office, uh your contact or the element in school.
Okay, thank you. Fantastic.
Anyone else? Hearing nothing, we'll move forward. Next item, uh discussion, Wolf's facility assessment proposal. Did I say that right? So we've had a lot of discussion. Our growth and offgrowing a lot of our facilities, so that. Brandon. Todd, Crystal, it kind of suffers and. What we're faced with, if we, right now, we have vehicles, pickup trucks parked outside because we don't have room for them. With added developments for more equipment, we, we just simply don't have any other place to look at. Uh, but Village Hall as well, um, it's just not set up very well, it never has been, it's old bank. Um, the village, I think, has just kind of been notorious through its history, just, you know, pop in, it was an old house. Prior to this, so it was a big improvement, but, yeah, it's still hard to, to have a lot of meetings, the conference room's small, it's inadequate. Um, the police department, um, you know, there's a lot of talk about combining services in one building for. Fire and police and um what that would look like, so. After some department head meetings, um, we made a decision to reach out to Wolf and. Um, they would do a facility assessment for us to see, you know. If we're gonna build, you know, maybe, maybe number one, the village halls remodel, and that's our, our, the best plan for it, but we don't know that, you know. So could, could there be some um architecture that would open this building up? You know, so that's one of the things that we wanna make sure, okay, uh Village Hall, we know is, is. It's not cost effective to do anything with it. Second is to build offsite, how big do you build it, you know, you'll, you'll be good for twenty years, it'd be good for thirty years, it'd be good for ten years. Uh, some of those things that we, we just don't know, you know, how. They, they have the answers for it, um, then again, the fire and fire departments, their max, their fire department. Their bays are pretty much maxed out here.
Do we pay a lease for that?
Pardon?
We, we lease out the space.
Yeah.
Up there.
Yeah, so.
Not knowing, no. Well, not at least, right, we're paying for a part of it.
So I'll just circle back with Travis because uh they did meet with Travis just to get their idea, cause they're in the previous department. And not with us, just to get some of our, our thoughts, very huge, so. Um, but again, I thought it was good um to basically put some work in there. And if, at a time when we wanna move forward, we can at least say, well, we have justifications to, you know. Why we need to expand, why we need to build, um, and that should clarify that we put some thought behind, how big the building's gonna be. And, you know, the layout of it, whatnot, so. That amount is twenty four thousand, four dollars, um, and again. I'll have to check back with Travis to see where their discussion led, I, I, I never got a. Any feedback back from either one of them, but I don't like that, so, you know. They did do all the school, and they do a significant amount of work and around the area. And I know it was mentioned, that sort of thing was mentioned at the last joint meeting with the town as well, of possibly having. If there's a way to do this, that share use, not just the fire police or everybody else, or is it in the town hall be part of that or whatever communities, you know. Those types of things, can we get that involved and have them as, and all this part of that discussion as well? At least for something. At least for something to say, okay, here's options, one, two, three, maybe together, maybe apart, whatever it might be.
And Market Johnson suggested that this, uh. This, um, uh, be put, taken through old, or is there other firms out there too, to possibly seek some kind of a, a bid from as well?
Yeah, there certainly is, um, I've been most impressed with Wolf myself.
Yes, Travis, I've heard them too.
I don't, I don't know.
Oh, you didn't get any feedback from?
It was right around the holidays, so that was, so I'll have to circle back to Travis.
I guess, I guess, looking at it from, uh, uh, I understand you, you might be oppressed with them, but, uh, you know, keeping competitiveness too, as, uh, somebody else comes in and says. We can do something similar, or, or maybe a little bit more for, uh, uh. A significant amount, but less or whatever, that, that's what kind of keeps the competitiveness together, uh, with the, uh. Taxpayers' money, you know.
Yeah, I'm with Donnie on this, if you're able to get some other visits and stuff and talk to some other people, I think that, right, but. I think it's a great idea, update our facility when needed and get some outside input on it.
Anything else? First and second on the table, any other comments or discussion? I would give her.
Hi.
Any opposed? There is, we are, thank you, everyone. It was just, it was just the one that the.